All right, I'm going to six thirty we will come meet in order please.
Dear Jesus, first give thanks, praise for all the messages and stuff on us, they're too numerous to nail. We ask you to guide our footsteps and guide our actions and help us to make decisions that are in betterment of all the residents of the town of Siler City.
Good joy and pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I approach you, may I be with leaders in our South City Division?
I will. Our South City Division statement is to advance a framework for our success, to balance governance, dynamic partnerships, and engage community.
All right, thank you, and I will read the South City Division's statement. South City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society. Now, I'm going to be here after just a moment. I have found out when I got here today, this is sort of a special day, that somebody got a birthday just sitting in here. How old are you?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, well, I think we all ought to sing happy birthday. Here we go.
Happy birthday to me. Happy birthday to you.
Adjustments to the agenda.
All right, well, just the only thing we have is the under consent agenda, three dot one, January, December nineteenth, and that's.
I'll make a motion that we approve that adjustment to the agenda.
Motion second, all of your favorites say aye, all those opposed like sign, if motion carries, great. Well, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify saying aye, all those opposed like sign, that motion carries as well. We'll move on to the public comment. We've got one person signed up for the public comment. Before we get started, I remind you that you'll have about three minutes. Won't be any question and answers, you know, nothing like that, and our panel clerk will be the timekeeper and Mr. Brad Phillips, yeah, so that information can be tracked. Yeah, if you would, if you cannot state your name, address, please sir.
Just on you.
Appreciate you guys writing this form for us to come and talk to you guys. My name is Brad Phelps, address is two three two Hunter Glen, Glen, Siler City. I know the rules, guidelines, and all that, and I took the advice and printed you the outline, understand you guys aren't going to make a decision on this at all, as far as tonight, hopefully after this conversation, perhaps you guys will be the generation. I'm here in front of you guys today because of a project that I've been working on for almost two and a half years. I bought some lots in the foreign subdivision and going through the process of finding out the right product for historic downtown and trying to bring affordable homes to this area and bring growth, people come and experience the downtown living. Since then, I've been designing the floor plans, I don't know if you remember the old Sears robot homes that easily just they deliver an entire house, like you do for the footings and the foundations of the house up. But their success was the type of home that they had, and they all ended up being in historic downtown, so I wanted to complement that product. So I designed three houses on three lots that I own in the foreign ridge subdivision. Come to find out, right when we were about to close on the lots, there was a sewer moratorium, which has given us the inability to get a zoning permit from the planning department, I talked to the planning department, their hands are tied until they can get the approval from public utilities. Spoke to the public utility, trying to figure out how my lots are subject to the moratorium, and then also talked to the panel management office and trying to get clarification because, one, my lots aren't subject to this moratorium, I'm asking for guidance from this board to review what I've got, and if we couldn't refer to the letter that was from the Department of Environmental Quality. On page two, I've highlighted, I've highlighted the interpretation and guidance that the Department of the Environmental Quality provided, give you guys guidance for subject to this moratorium. One is new sewer lines, no issuance of permits for new sewer lines, that's similar to a few subdivisions where they got to run the sewer lines. Two, new taps, what a tap is, is it's a lateral tap that's installed to the lot, and there's no issuance of permits under the the moratorium. With existing taps, they allow you to connect, and they allow you to move forward if it's not significant boundary. I do have sewer taps on my lots, and what sewer taps are, are the lateral lines that comes to the property line. Can I ask the boards, given that I'm the only one here, probably come to give me a couple more minutes, because this is important. I've been working with this since 2020, COVID, price increases and all that, and this popped me off, or I would ask with consideration to give me devoted time to hear me out. So lateral line is actually a permit that you need to pull and pay a tap fee, and then the public utility company would come out and install those, the cleanout. I've got the free cleanouts, I'm already tied to the sewer system, and it's given me the ability to move forward with this. But I cannot get my zoning permit because the public utility is saying, no sewer whatsoever. Again, tap fee, there's a permit fee that's the tie to it, the utility company comes and installs it. I've got the three lots here, which I've got taps here and here and here, and that I'm building three individual homes, seventeen hundred square foot, three bedroom, two and a half baths, portable housing, that significant volume, and what I'm asking the board to do is to go back, look at what is the interpretation, look at what we've got existing, and I'm not asking you to overstep the boundaries, I'm not asking you for a special request. I just need your interpretation to say, yes, these lots aren't subject to the sewer moratorium because there's cleanouts there, and it specifically says in this letter that existing sewer taps are allowed as long as it's not significantly bombing, and if we have residential homes have assistance, significantly bombing, we have a problem. I don't think my lots are subject to this moratorium, I'm asking for you guys to make that concession and grants the planning department the ability to review my zoning permit that's been submitted for approval so I can move on with my building from this building source.
That's it? Thank you very much for your comment. I think that's all we can. All right, next we'll move on to public hearing manager.
Alright, so this is a general public hearing to gain public input and consider potential projects for responding maybe a possible under the community development block grant program. And the category is housing planning, infrastructure, and economic development. The C V G is an annual grant from PUD to assist in the development of vital community. Community development block grant can be used for a wide range of activities such as public facility, infrastructure, housing rehabilitation, commercial and industrial rehabilitation, historic preservation, and economic development. This first public hearing is a requirement in the process of any grant application to the C V B G and is required prior to submission of an application to discuss and receive feedback on housing, community, and economic development. Staff has submitted a pre-application form for two and a half million dollars in the economic development program for infrastructure needs at the K M site, and will hold other projects, public hearings, and a future. Currently, we, with C V G, we have a neighborhood revitalization grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand, and we've got an economic development grant at the wastewater treatment plant with three million.
Thank you, by sign to speak.
For the neighborhood revitalization, it was seven hundred and fifty thousand, and for the economic development at the wastewater treatment plant for improvements, it was three million. And then we're currently in the pre-app process for two and a half million of the cans.
And we already applied to this?
No, we actually have, we have to fill out a pre-application form and get on their meeting, and we're on their October twentieth agenda, and then from there, they can tell us to proceed with the application.
Now, pre-apps for the two point five, and the seven fifty and bring up to three hundred million, really?
They're already awarded.
What actually we need other than?
Just the public hearing, and then on the October seventeenth agenda, we'll bring back the project specific public hearing, and then we'll go from there through the application process.
It's already pre-apped, we don't need to approve it yet.
Correct, yes.
Thank you for your work on this.
All of this is common for item seven point one, seven point two, pending to the vulnerable administration. Our clerk has some of the second steps for the department to do an investigation.
As per speaker, it's not.
So, as Hank stated, there are two voluntary annexations. The first one in your packet on page eighteen is for two sixty-five Handstone Road, and it is an existing mobile home park with a proposed expansion of twenty-five more homes. Town staff looked at both the financial impacts and the service impacts of this proposed, requested annexation, and staff is not recommending this annexation. This is a requested annexation because as part of our utility policy, we require that that the developer, in order to get the utility expansion, we require them to to request the annexation. As you guys may remember, we've had quite a few others that the board took no action on, and that's what staff is recommending on this one. Do y'all have any questions about the information on the memo for this one? And then the second one, and if y'all, if y'all want to take action on that, then, you know, we would need to bring it back to the next meeting. But if you don't want to take any action, then you don't have to take any actions.
So the first one serves no, depending?
No, sorry. And then on the second request is on page twenty-two, and it's a voluntary annexation for four hundred and forty-five acres at the K M site just off of Highway sixty-four. Staff took a look at both the financial and the service impacts, and staff is recommending this annexation and following the end of the packet on, there's quite a lengthy resolution starting on page twenty-seven, and we would need that resolution approved by you guys if you agree with the annexation. And this will be the first step, this is just to show the intent of the annexation, that you guys are interested in it, and then we would set a public hearing for for October seventeenth. Questions about that one?
We analyze each separate.
No, I think he's talking about two sixty-five, if you guys don't want to do anything with two sixty-five, then we just move on to the next one, you don't have to take any action.
You say, no action, they just die.
Then the second one is just to approve the resolution, because it outlines the, that you're setting a public hearing date.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution that's presented in our package on page twenty-seven for annexation for one point six, seven acres.
Already have a motion, have a second. All those in favor signify saying aye, all those opposed like sign. Extra old business, new business.
All of we did decide tonight, I'm questioning that the current thing, community development department, the city and the district department, similar to what we do with our public works, and now public works and public utilities department. I believe it's prudent at this time with the amount of development and growth that we're testing the street in Siler City, the next ten years is basically different than what the past twenty, and I will make sure that in a statistically possible way, we're prepared for that. So what is the action we do for the board tonight would be to create a community development director position and a code enforcement officer position at grades thirty-four and twenty-three respectively. Doing so would allow us to get ahead of the game when it comes to future planning and development, making sure that we have qualified staff who are able to handle whatever comes down the pipe, bring code enforcement in how, rather than having a contract currently, and do so at within two fifty, our current budget. But we just finished one quarter this year, and the last thing I want to do is hire additional staff without funds covered. I'm confident that if it exists a fund between this and the recent departure, our permanent schedule is there for us to cover the exchange. Another benefit to that is by having a more horizontal management structure, that'll put us in a better position as we need to grow. We're equipped to do so, or we need to add staff at the bottom instead of that. What I've specialized in is to, for whatever comes our way, rather than being in the back of all trades. Find that we need additional help, community development, code enforcement, hire additional staff for that need. Same thing with planning, if I were ill-prepared, lack of staff, lack of resources to address the development, new zoning, a planning department if we can address that in that room, rather than being in the back of all trades. And I think it sets itself appropriately as a town that we think may be twenty thousand plus population in the next, the next ten years or so. This is the, I think, the appropriate direction to go.
I appreciate y'all looking ahead, thinking about where we want to be instead of where we are, and so I'm just, we would be bringing code enforcement back in, correct?
That's correct.
How much money would we stake on that contract?
We are currently paying over one hundred and five thousand a year for that contract, so from that and Siler's recent departure, I think we've got more than enough money to cover the addition of one more department headed and a code enforcement officer within that. That's, that's, you know, it never fails, when you have something happen during the budget year, you don't take action prudently, other things occur that end up requiring use of those funds, but that department just replaced Friday, so like to take action as soon as possible and make sure that we're prepared and also that we don't have, we're not understaffed in our current planning department, need the needs of the public. Right now, we only doing little bit.
Let me ask a couple of questions here, but I've been looking about this, thank you. Which I, I agree that with where we're headed, we probably need to do something on there, but the questions I got are are we're going to have a community development director and a planning director. Who looks after the planning board? And he, that would be the person that brings the items to them and also bring it to the board here.
That'll bring out to the board, yes, why?
Like Jack does, man.
Yes, I can see the situation where either director to bring basic board and specifically what their function is, but items from the planning board would come from the planning director.
All right, well, that leads me to this question, if we have a brand new planning director, that's going to, that we put in there, what's going to happen when something comes up, some issue with the U D O that you've been working on for years or so, I mean, you can look it up. There's all kinds of nuances and everything in there, who's he gonna, who is he going to interact with?
In fact, the business owner, or there's, and ask some questions about U D O, the staff, who would they ask?
Anything, it could be anything, I mean, who, if he didn't have, if he didn't have the answer to it, because I know this comes up a lot. Who would, who would this new planning director interact with at that point?
That's a good question, so we've already talked about making new land, new plan, and I think a major recommendation of that would be to get through our current U D O, and planning director would be heavily involved in that process because it's not structured in a way that's, I would think, be reflective of community of the size that we think we're going to be. So it would certainly be the planning director, but when you say, who's going to be interpreting that, it would still be the planning director, but I think we're going to have a significant change in the next year to what that current U D O is.
Well, I understand that, I'm talking about in the, you know, when you make the transition from that, there's got to be some overlap in there somewhere, somehow or another, for transition from where we are, where we want to go, and I understand that, and there's going to be some things somebody needed to do, and it's just not going to, and they're going to have to ask questions from somewhere to somebody, and who's that somebody going to be?
What? You know, as a staff, we don't work in solid, we're working in team.
Well, I know that, I'm asking you to tell me who that's going to be.
Well, I mean, obviously, if you have someone on staff like, like our current employees in the planning department that have an opportunity to be asked questions, that would make, that would make a lot of sense, similarly, we had a new hire for our public works director. He has asked a lot of questions of Mr. Fordale, and running his role in history, and things that have gone on on the city's public work side.
All right, well, let me ask you this quick, since we're dashing around the issue here. All right, you've got Jack Meadows here, who's been the planning director, how many years, fifteen, at least, he's been at least that, right? Yeah, that's that, and you bring in a new planning director, and some kind of question comes up about, you know, it could be something routine, it could be something that you've worked on or something at some point in time. You not think that there's going to be some kind of resentment between those two? The new planning director going to ask the old planning director something, or you think the old planning director is going to say to him?
I would say, I want to speak by other directors themselves, but I would hope that our staff is professional enough, you know, to work together as long as it wasn't passing by.
I hope that too, but that's, that's the key word, hope. I see, I see the opportunity there for a lot of friction between these two, between these two departments, if we don't talk about it. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not against this, but I think this is something that's going to show up at some point in time. Let me ask another question, have you talked to Jack about this?
I had talked to Jack.
What he said? Okay, all right, discussion, all right. Well, are we going to go out close, I don't know that, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with making this decision when not having that piece of information. I don't, I mean, it's not my decision to make, but I think there's an opportunity there for that, to be some friction, maybe not today, not tomorrow, but somewhere in the future, because you essentially, you're going to have two directors that are supposed to be on a level playing field, right? And you're going to have one director, new directors coming in and telling the old director what to do. And in my, in my experience, my business experience in the past, it's a recipe, have an issue at some point in time, personnel issue. So, and I think the time to talk about it is now, rather than later, when we do have an issue.
That's, I think, I think, I think that this is splitting into the departments, I don't think you, you would have that supervisory responsibility. I mean, I've had, I've had this situation happen before, and when one person gets moved into another role and they have to, they have turnover to, you know, to the new person, you know, it's, it can, that can at times be uncomfortable, but I think, you know, regardless, you know, the, the person who has to, has to deal with it is going to be the town manager, who has to be able to basically manage the individuals. I think that that's, you know, we have to, we have to make a decision to, you know, whether we're not, whether or not we're going to allow these positions to be vacant and allow him the opportunity to choose who's best to fit those roles, to fit the future, the direction of.
That's where I was going, I mean, I don't know that we're being called upon today to. Make personnel decisions, nor do I think that's, you know, make the personnel decision that's been made before. I think we're just being called upon today to look at a policy decision, while we're gonna split the department, and then we leave it. And if it's a good idea, if it makes sense, then we split it and leave it to the town manager to put people where he thinks are best suited. Uh, I get, I get the sense from him, and it's that we're just being asked to make a policy decision or whether or not we split, not necessarily who's gonna be there. That's how, that's how I'm reading it and taking it.
Well, that could be, but it's not presented that way, but.
Understood, yeah, I mean, that, if we just, if we had not had names in here, it would probably be easier. But I, I know that it, you know, there's, there's emotion and there's, there is history there. Um, but I think that, you know, the, I mean, I understand the, you know, the dynamics, but I understand that we need, I think, from the future direction of the town, we do, we do need to move in this direction. And I think sooner rather than later, given all of the work that's coming up and, um, you know, with, with speed and all of the, um, the work that's being planned. So I think, you know, one of the reasons we hired town manager was to make these kinds of decisions, we're giving him the tools to make those decisions.
I think we can clean it up in a motion by not mentioning, Jack just approved the creation of the new government director, code enforcement officer.
Well, me personally, which, yeah, like I said, I don't have both of these, but personally, I'd like to, I'd like for you to have that, that, uh, closed session meeting, because I'd like to know what Jack says about it. Because, you know, we're talking about somebody that's been here twenty, and I agree with what you're saying, don't, don't get me wrong, I think this is right. And, yeah, ideally should be professional enough to handle, but you've got somebody that's been here twenty years. And, you know, they're making some kind of lateral shift. I would at least like to know what his thoughts were on how he feels about it's been presented, because I think that's pertinent for what's going on. Um, you know, I'm putting myself in that position, I know how I feel, so. I ain't, I ain't anything, but I, I, you know, I'm not saying kill it, but I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear some information from Jack at some point in time, what his thoughts are.
So, just thinking about it and looking at the, the, the way that, uh, I, I do think we need to do the shift, the, the split. Um. I think. Along, along with what you said, if there were no names or anything in there, then that decision, we could just make a blanket decision on what it was. But I, I, I still think that when it comes down to it, do we have the. I'm gonna say authority or whatever, do we, do we hire the person, if that, if that, that's the town manager's decision?
Well, we just making the decision on whether the, on whether the, uh, the change and split.
It's just a policy decision.
Right, right.
Um. And then, and then it's feeling the best manner of policy.
I think also need to look at the fact we hired Hank, because we think it's gonna be messy changes. He's made a lot of good changes, I don't think he's great, I didn't think he was done. And, uh, I mean, that's, he's trying to move forward and. Regardless of whether you have a name there or not a name, uh, he's moving forward, trying to plan for solid city, and that's what we want, and that's why we have, so anything about that.
I, I think, who, I'm sorry, yeah, I mean, oh, what, did I, well. Was it, what did you call it, right?
You know, I, I, I think, I think the issue there, though, is that we're going to follow the first step.
We, 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 we did dangerously close to that. Another thing we did dangerously close to, and I'm not trying to speak for Jack, I'm just gonna go after that, it could be Jack or anybody. If you have town manager who proposes Plan A. And we say, well, what does department head think about it, let's go to a closed session. And they propose Plan B, and it can be on any year, it doesn't have to be on this, it could be, that could be, or that, that. And we say, okay, well, we're gonna go, we're gonna go with the Plan B status quo, we just cut the legs out from one of the town managers that we hired. Um. To me, it's, it's, it's a policy decision. They've come up with several very, very good policy decisions, trying to give our town in a position that will be. I think your conservative on population numbers, I would think, in the next ten years, twenty-eight, thirty-five. So. We need to be looking at where we won't be going in the fall. Uh, I think this is just another step in that process of view as a policy. I'm not gonna say, who, who would be best where. Um, I think there's areas that can be done, there's doubt for whatever, but keep us focused on the policy.
We decided to split the public works into a different, you know, different, different families, I mean, we had Chris Knight here, well, everybody's good, he's been with the town.
I'm following you.
Okay, so that wasn't an issue. Now, I understand what you're saying, but we need to hear what Jack thinks, but. Care of the town managers to make decisions, and sometimes you make tough decisions and doesn't please everyone. You have to do what pleases the town or what pleases the public.
Well, and to your point about, you know, the form of the public works, public utility. That made, that's a little bit more black and white situation, maybe it's just apples and oranges. Those two, they were joined together, but they didn't really make, you know, weren't really a good, you know, a good fit going together. And it makes some difference, delineation between the two. This, I see there's gonna be some overlap, and I think that's where the rubs are.
And I guess the thing that I look at too, even though there may be some overlap, although they are two different entities. There's als- should also be that conversation between the two. Uh, along with the town manager, I think, as far as when there are decisions that may overlap. That all three of them would have that conversation to, to work together. Um, I just. When we. I guess if we, if we. If we go in and try to do something that we shouldn't do. Then I think that's gonna cause more problems than what we're expecting.
And, and I, I guess, you know, along with that, I think if we, you know, let, let's, yeah, and, and I, I mean, recognize that we've got names here, but if, you know, in, in my mind. If we take, we take the names out, we put the, we put the positions next to each other, is this the right thing to do for the town? I think it's the right thing to do for the town. Let's, you know, take, taking, taking people, people's names and personalities out of it, is this the right thing to do for the town or not? I think it is.
Well, that part of it, I, I don't disagree.
Yeah. That's what we're being asked to do here, and I, I get the fact that we've got names in here, but the, you know, what we're doing is we're creating, we're approving. The creation of a community development director position and code enforcement. That's, that's, that's what we're doing.
And we're bringing that back in-house, because especially we have moved on previously, which I think makes sense and saves us a hundred and five thousand dollars a year.
And we have a lot of importance that's not there in the first.
All right, well, let me ask you another question, uh, this planning director position. Uh, are we gonna advertise it, or what kind of procedure are we gonna go through to feel that thing?
We advertise our community position. Advertising on our website, letting them know the people who are not, who we have. Bring applications, go to the interview panel, and thanks off of that process, um. And it's like.
Do we advertise all positions at the same time? Or anything?
Obviously, we do, we do positions.
Well, there's four, but, uh, you know, we can advertise everything at once.
Well, not because two of them would be already filled with existing staff.
Less existing chapters to apply for in that role.
Just for showing a role.
Right, no, 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 yeah, I, I get what you're saying.
It's a good point, so, but it could, it could happen, very, very.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, if you, we're just creating policy, we're just, it's up to you, so that you put out. Four additions, I mean, any like.
It's only, really only three. But I think that, I think the, they're only planning on, on advertising for two roles, because the other two are technically built.
More questions?
Do you need a consensus or a motion, or a motion? Um, go ahead. Make a motion when you approve the creation, if you reinvolve the director of code enforcement, uh, positions and split the, or the two sort of ones.
All right, we've got a motion, and we've got a second. Any further discussion before we go to a vote?
Yeah, I, I would make this one, I did not say as outlined in the bill of, because I want to leave things off. I just wanted, one day, I intentionally left that part out of the motion. That was part of discussion, we have a question second.
Yeah, that'll be, is that reflected in the minutes, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we got a motion here, second. Uh, ready for vote, all those in favor, signify or raise your right hand. All those opposed, like, like sign, and it's. What? Yeah, let's do it again, I got a law. All of them favors, raise your hand. I guess, uh, all those opposed, like, sign, all opposed. Got that now?
I got it.
All right. All right. What's next? Andrews.
Thank you, Barry. So you're seeing, this lady's page is in the public packet, on, uh, page, getting on page thirty-two, you have a copy of the proofing and contract helping panel. Uh, giving certain notes to the last couple of meetings that we had with the head office. So this is, uh, not look like the financial policy the board has been approved in the purchase manual for our own treaties at administrative level. That we currently previously did not have, so now we have processes that are, in effect, as of Saturday. Uh, that govern how we're gonna be making purchases entering the contracts and have clarity and clear expectations for staff. Uh, still have a staff meeting, the list of the purchasing contract manual in detail, and the board will go out, including that staff that we asked to sign, definitely. Lots of understanding of the, of the purchasing manual. Um, I also like to, uh, to thank, and obviously not here, L K C Engineering and Bill Lester, who's been for tremendous amount of help with the C V D grant process. Um, a lot of staff with, with them, and Chris McCorville this past week, to make sure that the golden grant money and the C V D money. That the two and a half and the nine point seven million is stepped perfectly. Uh, thought for Bill Lester, who's been working with the local match, that would cost us eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. So we worked, you know, it's a pretty hard to make sure that we, uh, were able to claim the golden grant money, the match, the C V D, we're committed to that. Obviously, great things to play another way we can. Um, had some great conversations with both the dispatch weeks, uh, moving that process forward, uh, last Friday, when we were completing more point process in more detail and where a lot of key. Moving that ball forward, uh, this is, we will, uh, we'll continue to. Keep the review on a weekly basis on more board, uh, we received a letter today asking for more detailed information that comes through our F N C or special order by consent. That, um, this will fulfill the permission vacation goal right on. Uh, as of today, our police department hours when it comes to the law are now eight to nine Monday through Friday. Um, we still obviously have twenty-four hour patrol dispatch, twenty-four hour per county, uh, but it's eight to five at the commission law, we've got to supply to our, our regular clerk. Um, it was a public company for that purpose, which is to keep it there. Um, we have, the L P A will be fully staffed as well as a high-flying custodian position October the tenth. Those have been two very difficult positions to build, we've had it for a while, we're really happy to be able to build those and. Couple of contracts we have for custodial services, can bring that in-house. Uh, we also have a fine of analysts, and a special position, planning a start-up like River Seventeen. And at the end of the pack, you have a latest update on politics regarding the town hall project. So, on behalf of the staff, we appreciate the final having the bathrooms open on main pool, so now we're cheering the. I'm forward as well, my decision.
Uh, just one, one question on that, and one thing I, you know, because we, we, we do bring, bring this up, and we, we ask about before, we may ask about, you know, when it's gonna be open, can. Uh, hopefully, we won't have to have too many more of these updates, but if we do, can we add in, you know, the, the anticipated open reopening date of, of town hall? Because I don't think we, we have that in there, plus a movement. I know it's a good target, but, but, but that's exactly the reason why I'm asking for it, is so that we can, we can see that as a target.
I, I think the challenge that we have, it was talking about the kind of high fall. It, they, that, they're moving very slow, and then they're down there. They also have a very extensive frontlist that has to get through, and it's a project up, not making it to the back of course when staffing. And contract with that work completed, so.
Yeah, but I, and, and I appreciate that, I just, I, I think that as we go through, it would be good for us to have our projected opening day, and if the projected opening day shifts between reports and issues, but. Yeah, we just changed it, but we just, you know, that way we, we have a, a, because I know, I know it's not firm, I know supply chain situation, I get all that, I just want to.
And, and I think it helps our citizens, and it's, it's a public record, we have everything in there, and, uh, everybody's talking a bit. You know, we're close, we know, like, we're gonna, uh, got to let them know about where we are.
Architects there. I think ultimately it's possible, make sure everything's getting learned at some time. Is that true?
I think we have a contract to contract to. Should, should.
The, the reason why I ask is, I've been told, I think, that your architect is ultimately responsible for what's going on, I don't know that, I'm just asking.
I, it depends on, I guess, what aspect of the product you're talking about. Ultimately, there's a conscious application of the work, and what we're saying, the general contract that we're talking about.
But not.
I think, like, it was important.
Maybe, but he's not responsible, not necessarily.
Yeah, and, and I guess the.
Clarify that, because people's asking me, who is the architect?
I think they also represent our interest with the contract as well, they're the ones saying, well, okay, this is the way we designed it, you didn't deliver it, and now you gotta go fix it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they're ultimately, they're making all that responsibility.
They're there, and all, I guess you could look at it, they're there in the oversight role.
Okay.
So, yes, I'm saying that the work is completed, but ultimately, responsibility will fall on the contract.
I just wanted people to ask.
One thing I'd add to, that's what just in the, in the record, this pertains to the police department, there, I don't know, there must be some misconception, some. There, I don't know, there must be some misconception somewhere that, you know, the police department, the lobby is closed at five o'clock. So there's some misunderstanding, you still get in the lobby. And when you get in there, there's a phone in there that you can pick up, and it goes directly to dispatch. So it's not like, it's not, if you go there, you, you, you can reach somebody, some point or another.
It is a safe zone, there's cameras up.
Yeah.
So it is a safe zone.
Yeah.
Uh, and we also still have cameras, I'll be critical, well, cheaper, don't we have cameras at the two parking spots where there's, uh, potentially drop offs.
The lobby is open, customer service is closed. And that's the key.
But, but still.
But the, the camera, the budget, we put a very high-tech camera system in the whole P D. So there are cameras in, in the parking lot, where that safe zone should be rather.
That's what I, that was.
Product, that's still captured, I guess.
We, we have a lot of, uh, people who choose to, uh, thousands who divorce, they choose to protect their parking lot. There's in exchange for, it's for custody.
That's correct.
Uh, and I just want, on record, on Mayor's, uh, comments, that all of the public, uh, aware of his state, that that is bothering them.
And I think there, there is that misconception that you can't even get into the lobby. And I may be wrong, but anyway, that's not so, and, and there are things being done for this situation, as you've outlined, as Commissioner Faden, so. Just want to make sure that's in the record.
One quick question, Commissioner, uh, those cameras are not monitored, twenty-four seven?
No, they're, they're recording.
Uh, the cam, there is a big screen, wide screen in the sergeant's office that captures all the cameras. There's someone in that workspace after hours, uh, all those cameras are clearly visible to you.
Most cameras are playing.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. And attorney, what you got?
Going ahead.
Governor Body Conference.
I have, uh, back in May of twenty nineteen, in, uh, Bishop and Chief, um, I had sent a letter to him, for the board to review about some of the things that we've done in, in our community. So there've been some things that's been done. So then, uh, I walked around the block with our former town manager and Chris McCorville. Wanted out things that we knew that needed to be done. And then I walked around the block with our current town manager about things that needed to be done, nothing. It, there are just some things that, that, that have been writing, that was put down in writing. That have not been done, and, and I don't.
Your best friend.
So, I, 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 I mean, I'm just following up on, on those community things that, that have been out there since twenty nineteen, that nobody has followed up. And so I just, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, I know. So I just, I just wanted to just put that out there, so that, uh, we're, we're looking for somebody to at least come and do something. So I, uh, hope this, it's handy. So, uh.
Yeah.
To help, you know, but they fixed my, my, I need you.
I'm not gonna be the way of all your items, but I'll make contact with you, but it's free.
Yeah.
I knew that was coming. Sorry about that, yes. I was mad.
Yeah, I didn't, I really didn't know you'd be here.
Says he is, go take it there. So I, I, I feel confident that wherever your concerns are, they are gonna be addressed sometime this week, I suspect.
And like I said, definitely, some of the things have been done. We've had, uh, we've got our children at play sign, uh, we have, uh, the curb parking and, uh, no parking. And we've had some other signs that we put up, but then they're just, some of our, our digits are not playing. Um, my sidewalk does not even meet the, uh, have, there's, uh, the pipe is there, it, the dirt is eroded from off of it, and the sidewalk is just sitting there. And then the pipe is down here, and then there are some other things. So just, just trying to, trying to do that, and then, um, then we have some other unsavory things going around, around in the block as far as, uh, people who are doing things that we legally, and that we need to have more um, patrols and things like that going on, so. But, you know, I know we're shorthanded and all that, but feel.
You think you can put your hands on that list again?
Oh, don't worry, I can.
Dale can also help.
I can tell you, I've been getting several of those five, things to work on.
Okay.
We're trying to get through that, we've been here a couple of months now, and so it can really hit the ground running, find the line in the department. Actuate to the town, I know, obviously, they're regular, uh, caller, getting things done, trying to, uh, pay for different issues of other people. Um, it's a, it's a challenge right now, I will say that the department is, is going towards that. And we haven't been able to make some hires as of late, but obviously that takes us. As we're learning, we're very, we have to change it from what we do and how to do, because apart from the ground up, and you're not able to do that.
We want to keep him, not win.
I really do understand that, but, you know, I'm just looking at, um, how long it's been, been now. And, and, you know, it's, it's been very limited to.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. And I, I have all confidence in our town manager and our public works director will be home.
I believe it, because if he's, if he's dead at the hour, then I know.
Yeah. All right, any other comment? Can I close session? That's great. We don't hear much of the terms, y'all, thank you.